Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, January 24th, 2022. Roll call.
Mr. Schipkin? Mr. Metropolis?
Here.
Mr. Quinlan? Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shidack?
Here.
Please just please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with the work session. First item on the agenda is the lot split and consolidation for 11526 and 11514 Ravenna Road. The applicant can please come forward and give us a short presentation of what you are looking for this evening, please.
So, how are you, everybody, this evening?
Good.
Name and address, please.
Matthew Terry, 11526 Ravenna Road, also the owner of 11514 Ravenna Road, looking to basically merge the two lots there. The 11514 previously sat on about four and almost three-quarters of an acre. I'm looking to retain just the four acres and sell off the current 11514 lot. So that is the reasoning for the subdividing, to perhaps build in the rear of the property. So that's why you see the two 90-lot frontages on either side of the 11514 and the 11526.
So when all is said and done, we'll have three parcels?
Correct.
And Lynn, everything is conforming? Is there anything else that you want to share on this?
I guess I would just like to share that this was not the first iteration submitted by Mr. Terry. So we got this to a place where we had the all-conform frontages to make this happy meeting for you all. The intent of the applicant is probably to build on it himself, or truly have an intent right now to subdivide it further, maybe some of that in the future for family. But I always like to find people that what you do, you want now, maybe you ask them different than what you did 15 years ago. And so this plan reflects that concern and shows the 90 parcels.
Well, that is good. You know, we'd like it when we're happy.
I like it easy, and I understand.
Agree.
Guidelines.
Steve, any comments or questions?
I have nothing, no.
Pete?
I have a couple of questions. Right now, we're showing, we're showing three lots.
Correct.
And there are lots which are larger, kind of, better phrase, kind of a U-shaped lot?
Yes, in the rear, correct.
Okay. So this could be three lots, but you're allowed to do four of them.
It could only be four total with the frontages that would allow. So you can only probably split the two. The five is the remaining acres. That will be the new parcel. You could probably only split that five perhaps one more time to have an additional fourth, but that would be the absolute max, whatever be there.
Because I see there's a joint on here, which I was, for these parcels, a joint?
Not as, not as, I'm looking to join now.
Okay, all right.
I'm looking to join now, yeah, not prior to this, sir.
Okay. Kind of a combination of consolidation and then splitting it up to create the three parcels. Okay. Craig?
I guess I'm sorry about being late. I didn't realize it was getting that close. Are, is the, so two lots have houses on them?
Correct.
Lot have a plan for a house to be built on it or not?
In the works.
In the works.
In the works.
That's going to take that entire lot, if it's the plan?
It will for the moment, yes. It will be placed specifically so that if there were to be another divide, it would be able to be.
Possible.
So I would eventually split that five into 2.5 per lot if needed to be. That's a long ways down the road.
Right. And there's, I guess they've reviewed plans for this, for the parcels?
It does. Prior to you having joined us, I made the point that this wasn't Mr. Terry's first admission?
Right. This is probably about the third.
It took us while getting this place. He's really trying to keep options open while still meeting their requirements, and I think we've done that.
All right. David?
No questions.
Scott, anything?
Nothing.
All right, if you will have a seat, we'll get back to you in the regular meeting agenda to make a motion. Thank you. Next is the similar use determination for the kennel in the I-2 district.
Good evening. Matt Nolan and Tony Dufresne, we're with Funnel Hill Development, 3000 G Henkel Drive in Lebanon, Ohio, here on behalf of Funnel Hill Development. And Pet Suites, property looking to go in on Daro Drive, Daro Road there.
What it is, anything to share about your similar use determination request?
Sure. Yeah, the actual use of a kennel is not in the zoning code, and so the recommendation is that we come forward with a similar use. And what I always like to tell people is that this is not the kennel that we all grew up with. Make sure you drop your dog off and they run up and down and wear themselves out and you pick them up when you get back. That's not what this is. This is a little different that they come now. I personally don't have a dog, but for people that do, this is the high-end kennel, all right? This is where the dog comes back smelling and looking cleaner than when you drop them off. They're always, every minute of every day that they're outside, there's a person with them. They close at 8:00 PM, so there's never dogs out after 8:00 PM. And frankly, it's before then that the dogs are usually all brought in. So Pet Suites is the largest chain of high-end dog kennels in the country. They've got over 60 stores now and are growing, and we're responsible for all of Ohio. We're currently finishing our first store in the Cleveland area right now up in Westlake, and so we're happy to have that one. I will say that we were very happy to work with Lynn and Larry. They have a little different reputation than dealing with Westlake, so we're happy to be out in this part of the state to be working, but we'll be happy to have those two stores if we can find one in Twinsburg that fits with the community.
Thank you. Just so that you know, and I'm assuming you do, while we appreciate the site plan building plan and elevations that you've provided us so we can see what you're planning on doing, this evening is strictly whether or not the use is similar in nature, and it's a recommendation to council, and if they agree and approve it, then you'll need to come back under separate application for your site plan and building review and approval.
For sure.
Lynn, anything else to share with us besides what is in this nice report of yours?
I spoke with the lot director regarding this similar use and got some support. Felt like any type of mitigation that ever could be handled in a site plan review. So if we were to, at some point, get another application for a kennel by allowing this use, it would still be subject to site plan review.
Sure.
And so therefore, the industrial district seemed appropriate for the install process.
All right, thank you. David, any comments or questions? Steve?
I have nothing, no.
Pete?
I have a couple of questions. Looking at this plan, if there, how do you handle a veterinary emergency?
So NVA is the ownership of Pet Suites, the largest vet entity in the world. So they have vets that are assigned, that they align with. They have multiple in the Twinsburg area that are NVA vets. So if there's a veterinary emergency, they call them, and they would come in immediately.
Okay. Do you already think they were taken to a veterinary clinic? Do you have any seating room here or an area that you're expecting?
They do not. They do not, no. That's not part of what they offer, that they don't have a vet associated directly in. They have grooming areas, they have areas that they could do something if they needed to, I suppose, but that is not part of the Pet Suites model, is to have an actual vet in the buildings.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead. Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I guess the only question would be to Lynn, I mean, the determination is that this is within a similar use as a veterinarian hospital or clinic, right? That's what we're making that conclusion?
Right, that's the connection to the I district as a similar use. Had a veterinary clinic, typically there would be some outdoor kenneling and indoor kenneling of animals that were either sick in a hospital or those typically tend to be uses that are accessory to veterinary use. So it's not that giant of a league to consider a kennel within this district.
And you said how many, wasn't there a limited number of dogs that were going to be out at a time?
Yeah, there's usually not more than 20 dogs out at a time per person that's out with them. That'd be a large number, to be honest with you. It's usually less than that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious where that correlation may be, and I guess I can see that.
Thank you. Scott, anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right. If you want to have a seat, then we'll get back to you in the regular meeting agenda.
Thank you.
The third item on the work session is the comprehensive plan, and I think we're going to hold off and we'll handle that in the regular meeting agenda so that we can get through all the applicants, and then they can hang out if they would like to for that part of the presentation. So at 7:13, we'll roll into the regular meeting agenda. The first item is the approval of the minutes from the November 1st, 2021 meeting. Are there any comments or corrections on those? Seeing none, we will accept the minutes as submitted. The second item is public participation opportunity for members of the community to address Planning Commission. If anybody would like to do so, now is the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll roll into the third item, which is the lot split and consolidation. Request for Ravenna Road, Mr. Terry can come back up to the podium. Is there anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission regarding your application?
Not at this moment, thank you.
David, anything? Steve?
Nope.
Pete?
I have nothing.
Craig?
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted lot split and combination survey for Matthew and Lindsay Terry, 11514 and 11526 Ravenna Road, permanent parcel numbers 64-00868 and 64-00010, date stamped received December 27, 2021. I move for final approval of the lot split and consolidation.
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shidack?
Yes.
Mr. Schipkin?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes. Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Approved 5-0.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next is the similar use determination. If you know, you can come back up to the podium. Anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission on your application?
Not at this time, thank you.
David, anything else? Steve?
No, I'm good.
Pete?
You have to take care of cats.
We do take care of cats. There's a small cat condo in the front. I've been pushing to get rid of because it's the worst thing to build, and I thought the reason you got a cat is so you could just leave it at home, but I've been told otherwise, so, good question.
Last dogs ain't cats.
We'll sign you up as our first tenant, so.
I don't know. I got a Father's Day card from him and I said, "Dear Father's, hurry, or I'll get over the line."
Craig?
Because down that line, just to be kind of funny, there's no other animals, like, you know, there's exotic animals allowed to be?
There's not, no. I know that there are, some of our competitors do, but no, it's only cats and dogs exclusively, so.
Good question. All right, I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted application and narrative for a similar use determination from Pet Suites dated date stamped received January 5, 2022, I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council that a kennel be considered a similar use to those permitted in the I-2 limited industrial district, and that the zoning and development regulations be amended to include kennels as a permitted use in the I-2 district. Second. Second by David. Discussion.
Yeah, I have a dog and cat, so it is that, and both veterinary clinics have exercise areas and that kind of stuff, so it's not really out of bounds to think of this as anything other than a similar use to a veterinary clinic. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Shidack?
Yes.
Mr. Schipkin?
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis?
Yes.
So 5-0 approval for a recommendation to council, they will take this up under consideration. Scott, would that happen, will that happen at the next meeting?
That's tomorrow, I'll certainly mention it. I don't know if we'll have legislation prepared.
It probably won't.
Probably not.
Probably meeting after next, yeah.
Perfect.
So two weeks from tomorrow.
Two weeks, great, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. Larry Finch and Lynn will be handling the presentation.
Well, first of all, thanks, everybody, for coming out on this lousy night.
Let's see if it works. It does, okay.
All righty. We're off. Okay, I think most of you have had some involvement in a prior comprehensive plan, including the last one done in 2014, 15. This is an update of the comprehensive plan, and just kind of for your benefit.
Did I make it too dark? You can't read notes?
Oh, no, it's fine. It's fine. Many of the recommendations in the prior comprehensive plan are still valid, and we looked at, the comprehensive plan committee looked at a number of those, and we've incorporated by reference many of those in the document that you've probably reviewed. But this particular update concentrated primarily on sustainability issues. Sustainability issues are not necessarily a big thing, or not a big thing, not a new thing to the city, but we've never really looked at sustainability as a specific element or subject matter for adoption in the past. So with regard to the 2014 plan, conditions were a lot different in 2014. There were some things that changed, some things have stayed the same. Basically, just kind of a refresher, in terms of the 2014 period, the Chrysler plant was actually under redevelopment. Now it is essentially built out. We have about 20 million square feet of industrial space, primarily logistics space in that building, with about a little over 1,000 employees, and income tax generated about a million, a little over a million annually from that property. That's only about half of what the former Chrysler facility was generating when it closed, so it didn't fill that void that we ended up with at the time of the closure. Over the last several years, our mix of primary employees has changed, actually has changed fairly significantly. We'd always been concentrated in primarily industrial manufacturing, machine shop kind of businesses that supported primarily the automotive sector. However, now we are dominated by other, we have a more diverse industrial base, income base, and it's dominated by healthcare and medical services primarily right now. They're the biggest employers, in addition to other things like electronics and control devices and things of that nature. Our three largest employers are healthcare-related. And just kind of an FYI, two of those now are essentially work-at-home models, and that may remain significantly after COVID is over. So there are perhaps some other changes that we'll see in the future related to COVID and the results of COVID and implications of practices adopted during this time. With regard to retail sales and services, the city has never really been a hub for retail sales and services, and those components have, of course, been dramatically impacted by the COVID pandemic. We've seen a lot of businesses with restricted hours, carry out only for restaurants, things of that nature, so, you know, we're hoping that that's gradually going to transition back to near-normal, and we'll see how that goes. And the current work-at-home practices have essentially vacated our largest office buildings. We're hoping that's not going to continue forever, but we're going to have to take a wait-and-see attitude towards that. However, with regard to industrial space, we have a very low vacancy rate in the industrial category. You can't find a 15,000-square-foot industrial building in Twinsburg that was on the market for longer than a week, and the vacancy rate now is right around 3.5%.
Larry, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's the normal rates for office and pretty packages?
We typically see those, you know, five to seven years ago, they'd be in the 7% to 10% range. That was not unusual. But, you know, since Amazon, since the change to, you know, the emphasis on logistics, that's had a significant impact on warehousing in particular, and that's created a huge demand, and that's basically what filled up Cornerstone. And we had, for a while, we had the Chrysler site, which was 2.2 million square feet, standing there vacant, that was, you know, reflected in our vacancy rate. So a number of other trends have been impacting us over the years, including, and this is not necessarily new, some of these are continuation of what we've seen in the prior comprehensive plan. Population growth rate has declined, but it's been exacerbated for the city because we no longer have vacant, significant vacant residential developable land that can be subdivided and split up into lots. Except for central Twinsburg, there's a very minimal amount of residential land, and it's primarily just individual infill lots that occur around the city. Our population continues to age, are both throughout the country, through the region and through the state. Twinsburg's average age is actually greater than that of the county, and greater than that of the state of Ohio, those averages. So it's continuing to be reflected in the demographic of our community. Also, another thing that's continuing is decreasing household size. It's been fairly stable for the family size, however, there are substantially more people living alone. As a matter of fact, roughly 32% of the households in Twinsburg are single-personed households. That really surprised me.
And that's high relative to adjacent communities?
Right, we're the higher. Right. We're becoming a little bit more diversified with more Asian and Hispanics reflected in the current demographic, and unfortunately, the poverty rate has increased from 1% in the 2014, 13 period, to about 6% in 2019. I'd expect that because of COVID, it would have been a little higher, but we expect it's probably right about that now. We've just gone over this. Oops, I went the wrong way, sorry.
I have one question.
Yes.
On the work at work from home, if a lot of companies go that route?
Yeah.
And they continue, how does that affect city income? Do they still get paid out of that in Twinsburg, and you have to pay their arid debt to Twinsburg?
Right now, we really, we know it's going to impact us in a detrimental way, not necessarily a good way. We don't know how much right now. What's happened is that the state level, the legislature's determined that an individual can pay income tax to where he lives if he is working at home, not necessarily where his company is located. So that means that, and we will be required to provide rebates or refunds to those who were working at home in 2020, and who request a refund of their income tax in favor of paying that to their local community. And because people really are kind of lazy, unless there's a significant difference between their local income tax rate and the city of Twinsburg's income tax rate, they're not likely to go to the bother requesting a refund. However, for somebody who might live in a township where there's no income tax, it's to their advantage to do it. We only have an idea of roughly how much it might impact us, but we don't know how many people would be actually willing to go to the bother of doing the refund request. And that will continue to impact us in the future if these companies don't start bringing their workers back into the office. We will have a better idea the end of April, after we've seen how much we've been impacted by requested refunds for the last year, for 2020. So we're focused on sustainability in this comprehensive plan, and as I said, it's not a new thing. The city's been involved in sustainability issues, actually, planning as a practice is designed to be sustainability, or in essence, that's what it's all about. And we started some of this activity back in Mayor Prokrop's administration during what was called the Green Initiative. At that time, it was focused primarily on preserving wetlands, identifying riparian areas, increasing open space, making sure that unique habitats were secured and preserved. So initially, this green initiative was basically open space. Over the years, you know, we've looked at different things, and basically, the trigger for getting a substantially more broad perspective of sustainability came in about 2009. At that time, we got a grant to do an energy audit of all the city buildings. That was completed by Bailey Controls at the time. They identified a number of improvements in a number of pretty much low-hanging fruit issues that we could address, like lighting upgrades, fenestration replacements for more energy-efficient windows and doors, that kind of stuff, and many other things. And what came out of that were several projects, like a methane-powered generator at the wastewater treatment plant, solar pool heat at the outdoor pool, and then the normal run-of-the-mill things like better roofs, more insulation, envelope ceiling of buildings, that kind of thing. And what really kicked it into overdrive was basically at the closure of the Chrysler stamping plant, when the city lost 12% of its total revenue. That brought us to a realization that we didn't have money to waste, and we had to be more efficient and look at other ways to conserve. Because we lost about 12% of the total city revenue at that time, it was a, you know, come to Jesus. come to Jesus meeting, so to speak, and it got our attention. So we've, in essence, taken this a little step farther. We started a number of things with that energy audit. We did, we were fortunate enough to get a number of grants to do a number of improvements. And our actions and our concentration on these energy efficiency and cost savings measures paid off in some recognition from Summit County and we received in 2013 the Summit of Sustainability Award for cities in the, in the region. So that kind of brings us to the current situation, sustainability in the current plan update. So as I said before, a lot of what was in the 2014 plan is still applicable, but we've looked at how do you bring ongoing sustainability efforts into practice more broadly in the city. We wanted to build on what we had previously done and you've probably, if you've looked at the information we sent, the city has done a wide variety of projects in the past that basically were done on a voluntary basis or the direction of a department head that was never really policy. So one of the purposes of this effort, of this plan update, is basically to formalize sustainability goals and objectives and get it into a policy document that can be adopted by council, adopted and in practice by the administration to make improvements and make us a more sustainable community. Part of this effort involved the establishment of a greenhouse gas emission baseline. And basically, if we were to realize any improvements, we have to know where we're at. So that was the whole purpose of the, of the baseline greenhouse gas emissions estimate. This will enable us to take a look at what we're doing now, take a look five years down the road at the next comprehensive plan update, compare the greenhouse gas emissions that are occurring then, to see if we're really making any progress towards being a more sustainable community with regard to greenhouse gases. So basically, what is sustainability? Sustainability is a lot of things, but it's can be simply stated as just leaving something behind for the next generation that is equal to or better than what we're experiencing here at this time. It has three basic pillars. You'll hear them described as pillars related to society, to economics, and to the environment. And it has to be holistic, it has to involve all three, because you can't just deal with, for instance, economics at the expense of the environment or at the expense of society. At the same time, you can't just do societal improvements and expect that the environment is going to just casually be okay. You have to recognize that all these things are interrelated. And the interrelated part basically is where the city functions. We sunk function in these intersections of economics and society, the environment and societal issues, or economics and societal issues. And it's important for us, when we do look at sustainability issues, to make sure we're addressing all of them, not just one or the other, because it's like having three billiard balls on a flat board and trying to lift it and not expecting the billiard boards to roll off on one side or another. You have to keep that level between all three to be able to make things rise. So we used, we used a process that is basically, it's been adopted by and outlined in the Sustainability Best Practices Framework, which is published by the Institute for Local And that framework document, it's available to anybody who wants to copy that, we have that available for you. It involves basically 10 different subject areas, provides guidance for communities who want to attempt to become more sustainable and deal with some of these issues. And it lays out a number of recommendations and subject areas for, that can be addressed to achieve a more sustainable community. The 10 that are listed here, if you can read them, there are energy efficiency and conservation, water and wastewater, green buildings, waste reduction and recycling, climate friendly purchasing, renewable energy and low carbon fuels, efficient transportation, land use and community design, open space and offsetting carbon emissions, community and individual We could get into a description of each one of these, but I don't want to bore you to death while we're here. But just if you've had an opportunity to review some of the information and what we've distributed previously, you may have a pretty good idea of what those subject matters mean and what recommendations and goals have been established for each of those.
We've definitely changed one of these, maybe amended one.
Yeah, they're not exactly as, as in the, in the guidebook from the Sustainable Best Practices Framework, but they're essentially the same. We maybe tweaked the phrase here or there.
I think we changed, that's what, we sort of focused on habitat preservation as a unique topic area because of the vast amount of things we have open space.
Right.
And the unique resource, we have a central part and a middle part. So we put some more emphasis on that, on the category of habitat preservation that may be found in this.
Yeah, obviously, you know, some of these categories are going to be more impacted by the private sector than they can be by the city. For instance, the green building standards portion. Building codes already address some of the, some of the green building standard issues. The LEEDs program is directed towards that as well. But it's not something that the city can really address other than by building, buildings to a higher standard on their own. And since we don't build very many buildings, we're actually more concerned with making the ones we have function better and being aware of building technology should we build another building.
Question for you.
Yes.
Do these city buildings need certified?
I don't, yes, I believe the golf course clubhouse is LEED certified.
And what's the plan to get everything else to be certified?
Right now, there's no plan for certifying existing buildings. We've had some discussion about that, but I think right now, there's a long way to go between the existing buildings and getting them to a standard where they're LEED certified. And that can be a very expensive proposition and it has to be on a building by building basis. So there are some recommendations in this, in our, in our proposal that include updating an energy audit of all buildings. So that's the first step in getting us started on that kind of trajectory.
We got into some discussion during committee meetings about sustainability procurement, officer, patent job, and.
Yeah, I mean, they're.
Aware of building renovations and purchasing.
Yeah, we, we can only do a certain amount right now. And it, right now, I don't think you can look at any one of our city buildings and not see a huge price tag to getting a LEED certified. So you know, we have to do what we can do. This whole thing of sustainability is, is related to how much money we have too. So we have to be conscious of what's feasible for us to do. So those are the subject areas and for each subject area, there were a number of goals and a number of objectives stipulated. And a big part of this then also was the greenhouse gas baseline estimate. Obviously, as we said, if you don't know where you're at, you don't know where you're going to go and how, how much success you're having in getting there. The greenhouse gas emissions involved collecting all the energy cost and utilization information for all city buildings. So we pulled together all the, all the bills for all the meters in the city of Twinsburg for 2019. We used 2019 because 2019 was prior to the impacts of COVID. So we expect that that would be a more normal situations and something that's going to be comparable down the road rather than trying to do something for 2020 when business operations and billing operations were totally different because of COVID. Also, we ended up only dealing with city operations. Some communities do greenhouse gas emission for the entire city, which means for all the industries, for all the, everything within the corporate boundary. When we started looking at this, it, it was apparent that that was not going to be practical for us to do, because our utility companies are not, were not capable of providing us with information geocoded by the community boundary. So we could not get utility information for the entire city based on the boundary of the city. Travel information, we couldn't get, we couldn't get enough information on commuting practices for the residents and for the employees at City Hall, so we didn't deal with that. What we did deal with were the kinds of things that the city operates every day, the buildings, the traffic lights, the equipment that the city uses, and those kinds of things. So basically, it was all utilities for all the buildings and all the services that the The emissions were basically categorized into different, two different categories of energy use. One was for stationary sources, things like buildings, traffic lights, signals, pump stations, all those things that have a fixed location. And then other things like mobile sources, things like equipment, machinery, mobile tools that the service department or somebody might use, welding gases, those kinds of So what we found basically was that the energy requirements for buildings, pump stations, lights and signs, those stationary sources, they're primarily satisfied, of course, by natural gas and electric. They are totally satisfied by natural gas and electric. In 2019, the city's operations consumed over 14 million cubic square feet of natural Our buildings totaled over 175,000 square feet and the buildings consumed 96% of the natural gas consumption of the city. So only 4% of natural gas consumption was for something other than buildings or fixed structure operations. So things like a pump station were included in these, some pump stations require gas to keep them warm, basically. With regard to electricity, the city's operations consume more than 4.8 million cubic, or kilowatts of energy. Surprisingly, the wastewater treatment system along, the wastewater treatment plant consumed 48% of that electricity, while the pump stations consume another 5%. So the city's wastewater collection and treatment system consumes over half the electricity that we consume as a city. Buildings, lights and signs consumed about 2.3 million kilowatts, or about 47% of our total electric demand. So what does that mean? The consumption of energy, particularly fossil fuels, which are used both for fuel for vehicles and fuel for generation of electrical power, produce greenhouse gas emissions. So the more energy we use, of course, the more greenhouse gas emissions result. Carbon dioxide is a primary greenhouse gas, 80% of greenhouse gases basically are carbon monoxide, or carbon dioxide, I'm sorry. Nitrous oxide is about 10%, and methane and fluorocarbons also contribute. Fluorocarbons are 300 more, times more powerful in terms of greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. So while they're a small contributor, their impact is large. We took a look at the emissions related to mobile sources and we consume more than 72,000 gallons of gasoline, regular gasoline, and 35,800 gallons of diesel fuel. So most of our greenhouse gas emissions, in essence, came from the consumption related to vehicle operations. Those vehicles traveled more than 700,000 miles, but like the firearm and police equipment, they spend a lot of time idling. So you know, that's not really reflected in the number of miles that you see here. And small equipment, things like, you know, power saws and, you know, leaf blowers and vacuum systems for the sanitary sewer system, all those things also consume either diesel fuel or gasoline. When we totaled it all up, the total greenhouse gas emissions attributed to city operations were over 7,600 metric tons of greenhouse gas, and primarily, of course, in the form of CO2. So just to give you kind of an idea of what that is, what that means, what volume that is, that 7,600 metric tons, one metric ton is basically a 27 by 27 by 27 foot cube full of compacted carbon dioxide, weighing 2,200 pounds. That's one metric ton. So if you multiply that 7,600 times, that's the volume of greenhouse gas emissions that this small city is kicking up into the atmosphere every year. And another way to look at that is a utility pole is about 30 feet tall, so that cube is only three, four, three feet shorter than a, basically a utility pole, just to give you another perspective. And again, I mean, we are a small community, so you just kind of magnify that times the number of communities throughout the world, basically, and you can understand why perhaps there might be an issue with the environment and greenhouse gases. So, um, we know where we're at. We know where we've been in terms of, um, sustainability issues. I think we know what needs to be done. I think we have good idea of how we can get there, what steps need to be done, and what goals and objectives need to be addressed. And that's basically what this policy, this plan is about. So, we're trying to take this, again, and make this a policy document, something that can be, um, a little bit more formally adopted. And a number of those, uh, examples of, of things that would help in, in bring this to reality are things like creating a sustainability working group with representatives from each city department. These are just a few of the recommendations. You've probably seen all of them and the information that you've been, uh, that's been distributed. We also need to have a written and adopted procurement policy. This, this is a huge thing. Having a procurement officer in place to help departments and to formalize the procurement of more sustainable, uh, products. Uh, we can not only impact what we buy, we can impact the market for sustainability, uh, product, for products that have recycle content and, uh, you know, for contributing our recyclables to that waste stream, uh, to help contribute to the circular economy. We also, um, would like to identify areas where reforestation might be implemented on existing city-owned properties, um, and make sustainability central to the Twinsburg's culture and tie it into the, uh, the naturally beautiful tagline that, uh, has been established for many years for the city of Twinsburg. And we need to seek more opportunities for green energy, uh, and the application of green energy to, uh, city-owned buildings and city-owned, uh, facilities. We need to promote the adoption of sustainable, sustainable practices, um, both to the residents and to businesses within, within our, um, within our sphere. Businesses, for the most part, are probably ahead of us in terms of sustainability issues because to them, it's a bottom line issue. However, there's a long way to go in terms of, uh, residents and, and have, asking the residents to contribute, um, in some way. So, there's a lot of educational needs that need to be addressed, and, uh, some of that is covered in the plan document. So, the city can lead by example, um, but, you know, we're going to need to engage in the effort, engage the residents and, and engage the, uh, business community in, in getting there. So, this basically, uh, kind of summarizes the, the whole issue here. We have goals and objectives that have been developed. They've been reviewed by the environmental commission. We're hoping the planning commission will give it a good review. The residents of the city of Twinsburg have had an opportunity through the comprehensive plan committee. A number of residents have been mailed directly the, the draft plan, um, and some of the reports have been included in the mayor's newsletter. You have the full draft plan. Uh, we welcome any comments you might have, and we're hoping that, um, after due consideration by planning commission, you'd recommend that, uh, city council consider adopting the, um, the plan update as a, as a document, uh, for implementation. And any, any questions?
Thank you, Larry. Anybody have anything specific or general on this? David, anything?
So many things, but not my time. We gotta do some of this.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's a sentiment from the public sector. I mean, we received, how many, 86 letters? 68 letters? My dyslexic.
Some wrong. Got a couple dozen, and then we got another six or four.
Yeah, the, the residents are certainly interested. They want to see something happen. I think the residents need to know that they are part of the solution. They can't just look to the city. We can do so much, but each and every resident of the city of Twinsburg has to do their share. Each and every business in, in the city of Twinsburg has to contribute in some way. So, you know, this, if something's gonna happen, and it needs to happen, um, there needs to be a concentrated effort, uh, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Steve, anything?
I'm good.
Pete?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the plan is not, sounds, at least we're, we're putting some focus on it, um, like, I echo, like, action. Especially with the wastewater treatment plant, that's the majority of it. What studies have been done there to improve, you know, efficiency, reduce emissions? That's more than half of what.
Right. And we have done, they've done a few things there, um, not many, but, you know, there's the methane-powered gas, the methane-fueled generator that's saving the city a lot of money in terms of saving energy costs to heat the digestors. You know, there may be other applications for something like that, but we only produce so much methane. But there are other applications like variable speed drives for pumps that we, uh, haven't had a discussion with the, uh, service director. He would like to do that. It's a budgetary issue for him, um, but, you know, the plant will need upgrades soon. So, some of those things can be worked into upgrades to make more efficient, uh, processes and help us save energy.
I see, I see Summit is kind of putting a lot of, uh, cost add to the wastewater, which I guess we're not seeing on Twinsburg, which is great, um, but hopefully, we're, we'll be ahead of that, and we won't have to do, you know, big, big cost improvements like, like they're putting forth to the, uh, the residents.
Yeah, I mean, like the stormwater management stuff and the fees? Yeah. Yeah, we, we're not in the county's agreement for stormwater management. We're basically doing it ourselves, so to speak.
So, it's not passed on to us, but we want to see us in that same boat.
Yeah.
Well, part of this, part of this planned document is to establish a policy that then we can point to when we apply for grant funding.
Yeah, and that's.
New fiber legislation that there may be grant money available to us. And when we apply for grant money, it's frowned upon to make up projects that match the grant funding. If you're well, we have a document that is already in place, like we say, oh, we're looking towards, uh, a sustainable future, and here are our goals and objectives, and those match the goals of a funding source, then you have a much better chance.
Yeah, we have, we've got a really good track record in terms of sustainability practices and, uh, attempts to make, make ourselves a little bit more, um, efficient. We've concentrated our NOPEC grants every year on energy efficiency improvements. Uh, we've, we've, um, put in place eight electric vehicle charging stations, uh, scattered around the city. Uh, we've done all kinds of, uh, building improvements with them for energy conservation. We've replaced garage doors in the police and fire departments. NOPEC gave us a green ribbon award, their, their, uh, environmental award for all, all the communities, we got, we got their green ribbon award, uh, last year. And they cover, they cover, I don't know how many, 118 communities throughout Ohio. So, we have established a track record. Many of the projects we've done in the past, uh, we did right after Chrysler closed, were done with, uh, money that came out of the, um, the recovery program. And we expect to have similar grant funding available through the infrastructure bill for some green energy things. So, we want to be in a position where we can take advantage of those. Part of that is having policy in place and being prepared with plans, um, so, you know, if something comes out, we're not standing there flat-footed without an idea of what we want to do. We can submit a project directly, um, to the funding agency.
So, this, it has been a bit of a balancing act to get through, um, the update committee with the goals and objectives that we've incorporated into the plan document and have them be meaningful and achievable at some level. Because you, you, there's no end to it. There, there's no end to where you could be with that framework in terms of possible goals and objectives. So, at some point, um, the committee had to narrow it down to.
Yeah, to be real.
To be, to be realistic.
Right.
Yeah, it's something you could accomplish and say, you know, and measure yourself against.
Right.
But I, it's very thorough in terms of what the planning committee did, and we can adjust to that. We spent a lot of time going through those different categories and picking and choosing the goals and objectives that seem achievable, but also that, um, would serve us well for numerous years. We added a resident component, um, in terms of what actions might a resident, um, be able to take. And we tried to adhere the categories specifically to Twinsburg. Like I said, we added the habitat preservation category, because it seems very important to Twinsburg community.
And that also could be an economic development opportunity. We talked about that briefly with the committee and with others. You know, the Liberty Park's recognized as an important bird area by the Audubon Society. We have 25% of our area of the city is open space, uh, unusual for a community. So, there are a lot of things related to open space and environmental preservation that we've already achieved, um, but those things can also help us, uh, offset greenhouse gases, uh, and more, more forestation or just, just preserving what we have can help, you know, sequester carbon. So, that's a step in the right direction.
So, the question, I guess, is, um, has everybody had enough opportunity to review what was submitted and take in the information that Larry presented, um, and willing to make a recommendation this evening? Would everybody prefer to wait to the next meeting and have more time to digest this in case they come up with additional questions and comments for Larry and Lynn? I guess, how would you like to proceed? It's open, anybody just make comment if they'd like.
Well, that's.
I mean, I, I'm ready for that, to, to move on this and to make a recommendation to council if everybody is comfortable with that.
I, I haven't had time to, to review it. I've skimmed over it, but, um, it sounds like it's in the right direction, and I can always provide comments after we recommend it going forward and still, so I shouldn't hold it up.
There'll also be presentations to council and time for council to, uh, ask questions. And if you want, I mean, you don't have to do it tonight, you can do it at your convenience, but, um, you know, we're available to answer any questions or to even do a work session if you want to do that. Uh, it's up to you.
The only other comment I would make is let's not make the perfect the enemy of the good. So, if we keep waiting for whatever quote-unquote is perfect, we will get nothing done. We gotta get started, and then from there, we know we should prove. We need to start.
Sure.
Yeah, that was sort of where we were at, with developing the plan document.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk forever about 10 different categories, and that category's not.
Exactly.
Everybody knows that, you know, my number one issue, uh, but you gotta get started.
Right.
You get the ball going. If you don't ever take a, go to, if you want to lose weight, if you don't ever take that first step and go to the gym and start working out on that first day, you don't ever get anywhere near your goals. You gotta go.
Okay, well, then, um, I'd like to make the following motion. I move that planning commission recommend to city council adoption of the 2021 comprehensive plan as submitted. There was no really date stamp or anything on here. I'm assuming we only have one.
We only have one.
One, one book that's considered. Right now, the draft copy of that, so, uh, any discussion?
I, there was one page I made this week, yes, and that was in section two. We thought it was wise to add a paragraph in part two, and that was today. We sort of highlighted, um, the need for our public infrastructure in, at the downtown redevelopment site. We thought that would possibly serve us well in terms of applying for grant money, so that was one addition. It's not, doesn't alter anything, um, with the goals and objectives, just was an expansion of the thought that we could use some help with the public infrastructure in downtown.
Yeah, and basically, I can explain that, and, if you wish. We're contemplating the involvement of tax increment financing, which is a process of, uh, you know, basically deferring the increase in property taxes, uh, to pay for infrastructure. Because the two areas, the major, two major areas for redevelopment, the central area, both east of Darrow Road, both have absolutely no utilities on them, um, that would help us qualify those areas for tax increment financing with a statement from the city engineer that infrastructure is absent on those, on those parcels, um, for development as, as envisioned. So, that's the reason why we wanted to emphasize that, because it's going to be part of a requirement for tax increment financing.
Uh, question.
Yeah.
Downtown redevelopment, this east of Route 91.
Yes.
You said two areas, but they're both south of Route 82.
Uh, one area is south of Route 82, the other is north of Route 82.
And, I'll picture in my mind where that area is. Is that, is it the triangular-shaped area or is it further north?
Uh, no, it's immediately north of the square. Uh, what, what you're looking at is what we've looked at in the past, primarily, um, the northeast quadrant and the southeast quadrant. The southeast quadrant was where the old school sat and where we're currently working with property owners there and have basically a, a memorandum of understanding to get something started there. On the northeast quadrant, um, you, you probably are aware that the building that was on the corner came down. Cornell's building. We anticipate, and we don't have any firm anything from anybody right now, that that will be the next area to go. So, we expect that both those areas, which are good-sized open spaces of about 10, 10-acre development in both locations, um, but they're totally absent of any infrastructure. No roads, no sewers, no water, nothing.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was, you know, in the right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions pertaining to the motion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Schibak.
Yes.
Mr. Shidmore.
Yes.
Mr. Metropolis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and Lynn and Larry for your time and effort and the committee for work on this. I know this are, takes a long time, a lot of effort goes into, to this. And looks like we have a good, good document here.
Yeah, I think we had our first meeting last January, didn't we?
Yeah.
Get a buggy knife walking through, uh.
Right, yeah. Unless we did.
All right, communications and miscellaneous. David, anything?
Nothing.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Pete?
Nothing, except, uh, this might not be, or it might be the last time I could hang out with you guys, but I'm sure it's gonna be often. I really need to retire, retire.
I think we still have probably a February meeting prior to, assuming that we have.
We do, we have, we have an application in the morning.
Craig, anything?
Oh, I just know on the, the schedule for the August 15th meeting, I won't be here for my vacation, so. Assuming we have that, I just wanted you to know that.
All right. Lynn, what do we got, uh?
So, we have a conditional use request, um, at industrial locations for outdoor storage. Those have a 30-day notice period, so we're watching.
Those had a 30-day public notice period, so we're watching the clock on that one, and that will, that is one agenda item for the next meeting. We have another request going this week for a conditional use permit for a job maker at the February meeting. I don't see that crossing the threshold by that meeting, and I also expect the site side to be drawn next meeting. So I would expect us to have...
And that is tentatively set for the 28th of February.
Yes.
End of the month.
Oh, it might be November, maybe.
It could be, don't look on it. Scott, anything from your end?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
All right, then it takes us to the end here. I guess I see 8:12 for adjournment.